Call this meeting the Fayette County Board of Commissioners to order first. We'll have a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have additions or corrections to the minutes?
We've accepted the minutes that have been presented.
In moving seconds, we've accepted the minutes that have been presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Haveman, Mr. Haveman?
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. We've been pretty busy with all the snow and ice, but we stayed pretty well ahead of it. We did a little tree trimming when we got a chance. Anything was hitting the trucks, we tried to go out and knock them down. We're out checking gravel right now. As soon as the weather warms up just enough, we'll put some gravel on top of these gravel roads, try to fill the holes in. Can't cut them right now, but you just make a muddy mess, drop a blade on them. But we will get them smoothed out as best we can for right now. We took last week and washed, with the warm weather, we washed everything, tried to get all solid off it, try to make things last a little longer, cleaned all our trucks and our equipment up. Pretty much a week-long job, trying to wash everything down there. I need to bring up, we have one employee resigned. I don't know if they ever give you the letter, show them that?
Hi.
And I posted a job according to the union contract down there, it looks like our mechanic's gonna put in for it. So it looks like we'll be looking for a mechanic. But I told him he had to stay out there.
You don't anticipate anybody down there wanting to go in and take the mechanic's job?
No, I don't see anybody wanting to. But I told him he needed to, he had to stay out there till he got caught up, before I could move him to another job, because I don't want to throw a bunch of stuff, work on somebody new coming in right off the bat. They need to work their way into the position so they learn what they're doing.
Right.
But that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Your trucks working alright?
Oh yeah, they're working great.
Good, okay. Any guys, anything else for Jay?
Do you, you post that mechanic's job down there and then do you post it publicly?
What do we do? Right now I've got the equipment job posted, and he's the only one that's signed for it so far, and it's up for three days.
Right.
And then I'll post the mechanic's job, and if nobody signs for it, we'll run an ad. I've talked to the school out there on the mechanics, decent mechanic class out there, and talked to them about students they've had who went on to Ivy Tech and stuff like that. And most of them, when they go through the Ivy Tech, they end up with a pretty good job. It's just so much difference in the pay for down there than it is anywhere else. It's hard getting people in. We'll just have to run an ad in the paper and watch and see what comes in.
Okay.
Right. Bill, Bill Gray's not here, is he?
Oh, he did talk to me yesterday. They're in the process of, he always probably here somewhere. They're in the process of tearing that, the kitchen up to put in the new dishwasher, so he said he was gonna be busy with that.
Okay. County Attorney, Mr. Brexton, you got anything for us?
Uh, I do, I think you had a couple of questions for me the other day regarding the cemetery board, if you want me to discuss that right now?
Yeah, yeah. Tell us where we are.
Okay. Um, you want me to have to head up to the podium?
No, you can sit right there, that's fine.
Okay, um, Barton likes to be transparent, I found so he's asked, we discussed this publicly on the record. The cemetery board, they resigned en masse sometime last year, was it in December of last year or something?
Right.
Okay, and so now we don't have any members on the cemetery?
No, we won't.
One member on the cemetery board. Okay. Well, the first questions he asked were, do they, do we actually have to have a cemetery board, or can we just have two or three people on the board and just get by? Second, can they just ban the cemetery board if they want to? Do they have to keep the board? So these were the questions I looked at. First of all, in answering the first question, I, you don't have to have a cemetery board. The cemetery, actually, the cemetery commission as it's defined in the law, it falls under Title 23, which is business and other associations, it doesn't even fall under Title 36, local government, so it's not something that necessarily has to be established. In fact, the language itself is, the county may establish a cemetery commission. However, once you've established that commission, everything after that falls into the shall category. Okay, so it's declaratory language. And it says, if it's established, it shall have five members. So no, you can't get by with just two or three. If it's established by the board of commissioners, you've gotta have all five on there. It's only four sections long though, so there's a lot of wiggle room. Once you've got those five in place, do you necessarily have to have those five do all the jobs required of it? No, if those five can figure out a way to make sure the grass gets, the tombs are straightened up, everything else in the sections are taken care of, then you can sort of just have a pro forma board of five, as long as everything's getting taken care of under the section. That shall language is being taken care of. And that shall language, such as the duties, they fall under the Fayette County Cemetery Commission bylaws, Article 1, the general bylaws that I believe are on record here, and that were established, it looks like in 2010. So if there's gonna be five in place, they're gonna need to abide by these bylaws. And actually, the bylaws are out of date now. It's no longer a cemetery, a pioneer cemetery established prior to 1850. It's now, effective July 1, 2012, it's 1875 or before. So it's became a bit more onerous of a task for a board as well. So it's not just 1850, it's 1875 now. So I guess the commission has some decisions to make. Want to keep the board, disband it? If you're gonna keep it, you're gonna have to make sure it's ready to have five members and that they're actually working on cemeteries from 1875 and before.
So we could disband it and disappoint three of either board members if we wanted to?
Yes, you can. It is, it simply, may establish a commission. If the time's ran up, you guys feel like it should be disbanded, you may do so.
So if we disband it, and then we put three people on, it's not considered a cemetery commission?
Right. Well, I think if, if you disband a proper, what, what, under this title, Title 23 is, is formed a cemetery commission, you're gonna have to call it something other than a cemetery commission. I think the intent of the law was to make sure that your cemeteries were getting properly maintained, and they said this is one way that they could do it. You could establish, the commissioners could establish something, and they could actually levy taxes to fund that commission. If you wanted to disband it, you're gonna have to come up with some other way to make sure that these cemeteries can take care of. And if that's a-
And then we'd lose our funding if we did.
Well, you're not gonna be able to tax under the new, the new commission, or I guess the ban of three, if that's-
You could, if you disband it though, you could keep your property tax levy on or not?
I don't believe so. The property tax levy is operating just through this commission. They're the only ones who have that power, I believe.
Excuse me. Can I speak on this matter?
Sure.
I'm John Mulders, those who don't know me.
John, run up here to the front, so we can, everybody can see you, get you on television.
It's not all that. It's, you know, Fayette County was fortunate that we actually in 1976 formed the very first cemetery commission, one of the very first in the state of Indiana. This is very important, and I'll tell you why. It's not just the non-empowering board, it does nothing. A cemetery commission is the liaison between you and pioneer cemeteries and the public to make sure that things are getting done. Like for instance, just a great thing, I went to Toll's Chapel, or supposedly the bridge that we built years ago to get over to maintain it, was in bad repair, and they couldn't get up to maintain it. After inspecting it, oh, it's in good shape, it's solid, it needs some rip wrap around it, and it needs treated. But, and then there's fences that sometimes come down due to cattle. I'm sure you three don't want that to be your responsibility, to keep tabs on every cemetery we got out there. So you become the powering board, but your cemetery commission comes up with the priorities of getting the cemetery back in shape. I worked for, all over the state of Indiana, several states, and I've worked for at least probably 18 different cemetery commissions throughout the state, and they all work differently. You have a board of five people that literally, in, what's it called, County, do you remember?
Floyd or?
Floyd or one southern county, but those five people are actually the active people that do the work, other than mowing. They do the restoration work because they came and became trained on how to restore tombs. So they do the actual tombs restoration work as a group of commissioners, and the commissioners fund their materials. They don't pay for the labor because it's volunteer program. I believe that son like Doug's got mine here. But once again, your cemetery commission can do all sorts of things, you know, we can form, the cemetery commission can form a workshop right here in the county, which I do education programs throughout the state. We could have them right here within our county to educate a handful or a dozen volunteers that are trained properly, and then set workdays up. So a lot of this work in our cemeteries is getting done without the labor cost to taxpayers. Up in Hemington County, they actually, the commissioners bought, once they got established, commissioners bought the trailer, the equipment, and they have a group constantly that comes in and works on the cemetery. They do a day of caring where they invite everybody to come on one day and work a certain cemetery out. So there's all kinds of things that a cemetery commission board does, and it is a matter of they shall, because they don't want to mandate that law and push it on the taxpayers, but you know, it's a more responsibility of all of us to take care of the ones that's passed before us. And I'm, I'm afraid that if you disband this commission, then our cemeteries are gonna regress back to two or three decades ago. We're already backed up about 10 years, but you know, we could go back out in campus and mall. My suggestion would be allow Doug and I, and some of the concerned ones at campus and mall, I know where they're all located, we'll go out and give you a full report on where we stand with all of them. And, but I would suggest that you keep your board together. You appoint new members that are wanting to be physically active, and actually get off the seats, go out and look at the cemetery, and maybe even do the physical work. And I'd just hate to see our Fayette County cemetery in the back, really, 20 years ago. In 1976, Leonard Urban, Larry Kelly, and Paula Hadda Hayes, and Harry Smith, and all of our historians worked hard to create this commission, and I'd really hate to see it just after these last bad. This last year, we have a big clip on everybody. I think we can start from here. And I was actually telling Mick, I was pretty excited, because it's like starting all over again, where I started a long time ago. But we can get it back in shape again. I'm confident, and I'm willing to train anybody that wants to kind of learn how to do this, as I do all of this today.
And we did make some progress last year.
Yeah.
You sure did.
You know, if you get a group of concerned people, it's wonderfully much to get done in a day.
I think the, I think the people who want to be appointed to the commission now, it's, I think they're concerned, and I think they want to get out and do the work.
True.
And, and that's three people. Two, all you have to do is come up with two more people that want to be appointed, and you've got your board of five. And I think we'd move on forward, and I think it would be a good thing, we'd actually get something done.
Yeah. I brought some basic give it, Doug, because I was hoping that the board of the state didn't tag, and there's things like a volunteer waiver, they, they can make one look over. In Switzerland County, they have a lot of volunteers do the work, that there's a release of liability to the county, and the signs they under witness, and so any volunteers that we make out of, I believe they should sign this waiver, to keep the liability down on us. And there's some other ways that, I know that the other commissions work, and that's what I thought, I'd work along with Doug, and gotta let them know how these other counties' commissions are working, and then they can create their own program, and be like, say that liaison between you and the pioneer thirty out there. Because I know you guys are busy, and you don't want to run around and look at forty or fifty cemeteries, and decide all I need to be done, you know, they can help you set it, and I will help you set priorities.
That sounds good to me, John.
So, before you just disband them, make sure that they're in that direction.
Anything else?
Um, well, I think, maybe I'd like to clarify on that. Yeah, there's nothing in the law that states that you can't just have a board of five, and it's those five guys that are gonna be running around, or, well, five, males and females running around, mowing the lawn, stringing up the stone. Say the word, they can shop the work out, like use volunteers, that kind of thing, so I don't, you know, I don't know why the four people resigned last year, I believe it's just-
Well, they didn't, they didn't give any reason, you know.
Okay, all right. But I can imagine having 50, 50 graveyards to take care of is a, is a pretty tough task, so, for five different people.
Yeah.
But again, you can get volunteers, there's nothing in the statute that says that you can't, so, that's all I can-
But you have to have five to keep it?
It's gotta be five. What has to-
And I want to say, you know, I wasn't promoting that we get rid of the cemetery commission, but we do have to get rid of the chaos that we've had the last, the last year.
Barton did not approach me saying, we've gotta figure out a way to disband this, he was simply wanting to know what the position of law was.
And I think the people that would be appointed now are gonna take this bull by the horns and get it done.
I'll sweep on this too.
I just have to, I'm Doug Killian, the only thing I've ever said about the cemetery commission. We had some issues last year, just a matter of difference of opinion on which direction we need to go. I've spoken to Barton and Zane. I gotta echo what John said, you know, I rely heavily on John because he's been doing this a long time, he knows what he's doing. But I think if we get the right people in place, that really want to take care of these cemeteries, that's the reason I got so frustrated when I went to inspect these cemeteries that were supposedly being taken care of, and when John left, whatever year that was, it seems like after that, they just kind of went downhill. And if you were to go out and look at most of our pioneer cemeteries right now, they're in deplorable condition. It's gonna take a lot of work to get them back to where they should have already been at this time. But it can be done with the right people. And I think we've got Lenny Westfield, who's volunteered, went out with me, and we personally attacked two or three, just to show that it can be done with just two people. Of course, there's more out there that are willing to help. There's a lot of them from, without the, without the county, that are in the same position as John, and he probably knows some of them that are experienced, that are willing to come in and work with us on a volunteer basis, to help get them back in work. Again, it's gonna take a lot of work, but it can be done. And it, to me, it would be a point of pride to the county, you know, to have our cemeteries looking good, because a lot of people are getting into the genealogy, and, you know, it would just, if I was doing that, and I would come in to look at some of our cemeteries, a lot of them are in a way back out of the way places, you know, I would be ashamed to take them out there and show them. We can change that, so, you know, it doesn't matter what we're called, it doesn't matter who holds what office, we just want to get the job done, and that's the bottom line. We're here to, to work and get the job done, so however you decide to go, we'll go with that.
My question is, can you come up with two more?
I'm sure we can, you know, I don't know. We want the right people in place, we just don't want to fill a spot for the sake of that. I know we got two now that are, have shown they're willing to do that. I'm sure we can get two more people to, that really want to do that, and, you know, however long the terms are, then we can step back and see, you know, what we need to do after that. You know, I don't think there'd be a problem. The key thing is getting the right people, not just putting two people on, on the, you know, the field of five, you know, or we end up right back where we were here this past year.
Well, if it says we have to do it right on the man, we can add the two, and we want to find the two that, right?
Yeah, I, again, the statute's not very specific on how it gets done, as long as it does get to that.
Right.
Yeah, we just want to do it right, and, like I said, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, we still, we still need to take care of these pioneer cemeteries.
Yes, we do.
And John knows that, you know, that's what he does. And, you know, Mickey, they've been, they've been doing this a long time, and I think, again, this could be a pride point for the county, with our bicentennial coming up for Connersville, but, you know, maybe we could say, hey, let's take you to some of these cemeteries, and show you what, you know, what can be done. Like I said, it's really disappointing to see some of them, to see the condition they're in, but we can change that.
But you had mentioned, you know, getting the Boy Scouts involved, stuff like that, I think, if that's possible.
Yeah, there's different areas.
That's a good idea.
You know, Boy Scouts are willing to get involved, you know, as a project, and, you know, we'll just have to coordinate that, you know, on the back community corrections and using that. Again, volunteers, no matter who we get to volunteer, like John said, we need to make sure that they have some type of waiver, so we don't put the county at risk. And also, when you have volunteers, my opinion is, you just don't want everybody doing that, because you can actually do more damage. You know, thinking you're doing right, just even by mowing or weed eating or whatever, do more damage than what may be already there. So if we're gonna do this, we need to do it right, and, you know, once we get a strategy plan and a program, I think it'll flow smooth. You know, there's options out there, we just need to sit down and put them in place.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Why don't you look through these other two members? I know you already have two who are, have expressed an interest, and then if it's not necessary, but if you choose to kind of give us an overall review of some of those cemeteries, and you say they, some of them are in poor shape?
Yes, I've, I've got a list, and I can get that printed out for you. When I first got appointed to the commission back in August, I just took it upon myself to go, look, just so I could see what was out there. And that's when I started seeing, I was hearing they were being taken care of, and I was seeing they weren't. So I documented, took pictures, and went to, I think I covered around 55 cemeteries on the list. There's some that have not been found, and John knows all of these by heart. In fact, he restored most of them to good condition before he left, whatever year that was, and, but, you know, I can give you all a report. That's what I'd like for us to do, is to come in every so often and report you what, what we've done, you know, where, what our progress is.
Rather than see, I, rather than see something done piecemeal, I'd rather you come back to us and present us the, the members who have expressed an interest with their names and, and anything else you want to report to us.
Okay.
And that way, we can consider it all at that time, if that's meaningful to the other members.
We'll have it all in order for you, and we'll go from there.
And last year, John, he restored the stones on a couple of cemeteries, and we need to look at that and see what the next step on those would be, or where we need to go on those.
Yeah, I've worked with John, I met him out at Orange, Old Town, as he was doing some follow-up work.
And that made a big, big improvement down there.
It really, it really did. And just some of the cemeteries, a couple that Lenny Westfield might tackle, if you see the, the before pictures, and all we did was actually just going and weeding and cleaning it up where you could actually see the stones.
Right.
It looked 100% better, just with no restoration. If you get the stones restored, it'd be amazing what they look like. The key thing is to, if we're gonna spend the time and the effort to get them there, we gotta keep them there, not let them go back, you know, be a waste of time to spend the time and the money and the effort to get them cleaned up, cleared up, then let them go for another three, four years, and start all over again, so. But we can work out a plan to, we keep up on that.
We do have to work out our plan for this summer. The maintenance ration we contracted out, and the man down a super job, we need to figure, what we need to contract out and what we don't.
If, I know there's a lot of close to the road cemeteries, if you will, that they can reach. There's a lot of cemeteries that are, you have to walk back through the fields and through the woods and to get to-
And you just do them in the spring of the fall.
And, yeah, and we can get those. They're, most of the ones I visit, I've got good correspondence with landowners who've given us permission to, to do what we need to do, whenever we need to do it.
Are you saying you think the volunteers can, can take care of those cemeteries that's back in the fields?
I think so. If we get some volunteers back there and get them cleaned up, cleared up, and then, you know, that's what I was hoping to do, is to get them to the point where we can get somebody like John or someone in to either start restoring or show us how to restore the stones, you know, get them cleared out so they can do their work.
Then it'd be your suggestion, we still contract out for the ones next to the road like we did last year?
Yeah, unless, you know, I don't know what other option would be, because, you know, that brings up the question of equipment, of course, as a-
Right.
We have no equipment now to actually do the work that we do. Lenny and I have been using our personal equipment, which is kind of went downhill.
If you do those as an addition.
But, you know, I think the law of service, you know, whoever that may be, you know, if they could get the ones close to the road, keep them mowed.
Right.
But also, there's a, I noticed some of the ones, we've got to be careful on who does that, because there's been some where they've knocked some stones down, or driven over some that have been laying down in the ground, you can see the tread marks, so we don't want to, you know, they need to make sure that they don't do any more damage than what's there, so.
That, I spoke with, we showed that list this morning, and you would have a crew in the springtime for heavy removal and, and stuff like that, and one in the fall too. So if you, I know, I know one of you said that, that you can do more damage if you don't know what you're doing, but you still need the manpower and the equipment, so at least, at least you've got something they can, they can go around the outside and weed eat, and maybe pull up trees, small trees, and stuff like that under your supervision, so there isn't any-
Absolutely.
So you can, you at least got two, two cleanup crews there, one in the spring and one in the fall that's available to you.
Yeah, and we can, we can keep up on these, you know, to make sure they, they stay that way. You know, I think that no matter what group of volunteers you use, that someone from the cemetery commission needs to be there just to make sure that, you know, nothing's done. A lot of times, the landowners really would prefer somebody from the county to be there, you know, just as, you know, just as a safety thing or whatever, they feel more at ease. But, yeah, you just don't want to turn somebody loose, no matter who they are.
Right.
Or will be, or will be going downhill or something. But, yeah, we'll get you a good report up, and we'll find out who we can get, and if you want us to report back next, next commissioners' meeting, or however you want to do that.
Okay, you have to come back, and that'd be great.
We'll have all the paperwork ready for you, give you a good report, and have you five, five members.
Super.
Good. Thank you.
Something real quick on that note is, you gotta understand this type of work and this, what we're trying to do, it's the process. You know, I tell people, don't look at the big picture, it's like, oh, we've got 100 cemeteries that are all in bad shape. You know, what you can do with a group of volunteers that are trained, and Eagle Scouts has got a trained volunteer with them, is the process is first like to find the cemetery, locate them, clear out the scrub trees, clear it out, give it, cut down, that can all be done volunteers. And then there's a stabilization before restoration, to stabilize the stones. Those stones have been laying out there for 150, 160 years. To take one and just restore it, spend all money on restoration while you leave the other ones in unstable condition, would not necessarily be the right way to go about too. So you could go to each cemetery canvas and stabilize it, and stabilization can be done with trained volunteers. And through the stabilization period, you'll see the critical stones that are broken into 20 pieces, or, or are too heavy to lift, a volunteer that takes the equipment tripod, those are put on hold a little bit, you may want to hold them for another year, to go stabilize them another year. There's a, the thing, when, when stones become unstable, they become a danger to visitors. Kids love to find one, so you got an unstable mark, and you got a child goes, and it's how many times it topples on them. So I suggest, you know, to find them again, let me know for the bad. We rescue them again, we stabilize them, and then we work toward restoration. And when they finally come to the restored state, they become, that's where you can do some more landscape maintenance, like filling in the depressions, and, and the markers are leveled again, so they become easier to maintain. So the guy you're contacting mowing to, he has an easier job going. But a lot of this can be done by just simply trained volunteers, and I'm, I'm willing to help lead everybody in that direction.
Thanks, John.
Sounds like we're heading down the right track here. We got a bunch of interested people, and we go get something done. Okay. Council Representative, Shirley, you got anything for us today? Council Representative, Charlie, you got anything for us today? No? Okay. Ben Houston?
Good morning.
Morning.
Couple things for you today. I've been asked about internet at the animal shelter. We could have a quote from MetroNet for $55 a month. It'd be a three-year term and that would be 20 megabytes a second, so it's very high-speed internet. This would be a necessary step if we were to move in the new phone system direction, if we wanted the animal shelter to be a part of that phone system anyway. So it'd be my recommendation to, to move forward with that at the $55 a month.
I would think, we don't have the internet up there now at all.
No.
I would think that'd be beneficial to us to put the dogs online, try and get more adopted. We've got a big complaint about the kill rate. So, so whatever you think.
So moved. Second.
Ben moved in second. We approve putting the internet up there. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
The only other thing I have for you is Melinda's going to be bringing a CSI contract for the court system. I did, I took a quick look at that. Everything seems to be in order. Melinda says even less than last year, correct? And that only locks us into this year. So Barton, you'll remember that there has been talk about moving to Odyssey.
Right.
Kind of got put on the back burner. Judge Riddle did just get with me a couple days ago asking to look at that again. But even if we were to move in that direction, we'd still be looking at a year out before we could switch it. So I mean, I don't see any issues with.
That was our big concern before, there was a multiple-year deal and couldn't get out of it.
Right. It's a single year. So, yeah, no reservations from a technology standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Gobin?
I have a couple of things on, on bridges. One of them is a change order on Bridge 82, the one out on Alquita Village Creek. When we had our construction conference before we started that, the state wanted some additional signage done out there. So we have done that, but in order to pay for that, we need a change order. And it's $3,302.67 for three signs. I'm going to make a motion on that. Do you want to see this or?
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. It's three signs, you're saying?
Yeah, it's three signs, but they're up for an extended period of time.
High-priced signs, though, right?
Well, that's a total, that's a total bill for like a year and a half is what that represents, the three signs. They're big signs, they're.
But you got half.
Got half.
Okay.
There's a place on the back page, when you make your motion, you need to sign that. The, wait, I'll let you finish that portion.
What was that amount of that change?
So are there $3,300?
Thirty, thirty, oh, two, sixty-seven.
Thank you.
They're the big signs that can tell about the penalties and everything. And they're pretty good-sized signs, and then they have to rent those, it's like for a year and a half. So that's why the bill is $3,300.
Where's the money for this?
What's your place?
Where's the money for this come from, Kerry?
It comes out of, well, it's an 80-20, 80% federal funding, 20% local funding. So we end up paying 20% of that.
Okay.
But the state, who administers the federal funding, is requiring it. So we don't really have a choice that matters.
Okay. That, that was my comment.
So I need a motion, if you want to do that.
I'm sorry.
I need a motion if you want to do this.
That, yes, I still move. I'll second.
Ben moved in second to approve the, the signs. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
The next thing is the state has sent me a letter asking that we sign off on Bridge 81 so we get to the audit stage on that. So you need to, that's the one out by Shelton's Plaza.
Everything is done?
Yes, it's all done, ready to go. So they want signatures on that too.
I still think they need to hire different bridge, different fence builders.
It was in the contract.
I understand.
And then I need you guys to sign that last page right there.
We need a motion to approve this, right?
Right.
Need a motion to approve final on Bridge 81. That's after the Shelton's Plaza, it's all done.
We actually came under budget on that, on that bridge by quite a bit.
You're satisfied with the bridge?
Yes, yes. The bridge itself is in great shape. We have a few landowner problems, but we always have a few landowner problems. But the, the actual engineer's estimate on that was about $850,000 and it went for $640,000. So.
So they're willing for it to buy a sign.
We, well, this is, size of the different, different bridge, but yeah, right. But anyway, we, we came in way under budget on that bridge, so I feel good about that bridge.
Motion to approve second.
Ben moved in second to accept the bridge 81. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you. I'll pick it up.
Any mail?
Well, just this one that Jay discussed.
Well, this, this letter from Mike McClure. He's resigning from the Highway Department of January 14. Next, I'm old business, area planning office hours. The only reason I put on that was last, last meeting, the area planning, because he's the only one there, had to establish hours where he was going to be closed. Part of the time when he went out and done inspections, then it come out that the office was closed all morning, in the mornings and going to be open in the afternoon. And in reality, the mornings are just reserved for inspections. Anytime he's not, not doing inspections, that office will be open. Cemetery Board appointments. We have two people that have expressed a desire to be on the Cemetery Board, Lenny Westfield and David Nichols. We need, we need a motion to approve then to the board.
So moved. Second.
Ben moved in second to point later. Lenny Westfield and David Nichols to the board. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Glad to, glad to have him on the board. Get two more and we'll be all set. Michelle Dudley, approve, approve the Community Corrections Grant.
I just need approval from the board to submit the 2013 to 2015 grant to the Indiana Department of Corrections for the operations of Fayette County. In the folders I gave you, the one with the clip is the actual written grant. And then the part that's stapled behind it is the financial portion. The grant requires the written grant and further detailed financial. And it's due to the state by the 31st of this month.
Okay.
What day, Mick, I'm sorry?
It's due by January 31st. I have to have it to the state by then.
So it needs done, that's the, we're going to do it.
Do you also have to have the?
Have to have my advisory board.
Thank you.
Yes, the Community Corrections Advisory Board approval also, which that meeting I changed to the 22nd of this month, next Tuesday. I have to have approval of the executive body and the advisory board to submit it. So next Tuesday, it will go in front of the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Okay. Does this differ significantly from the previous one or?
Yes.
Anything you want to discuss or?
Just the whole process was changed this year. Actually, was supposed to be due December 31st, but because they were changing the complete process, they extended it to the 31st. The, all the forms are completely different with the exception of the financial part. The financial forms are the same, but the written grant is completely different. It covers mainly the same things. Goals and objectives is one thing that is important and that has changed my, obviously my goals and objectives for there differ from previous administration there. So I have, we only had to have two in addition to the ones they provided. They provided us with three mandatory goals and deadlines, and I've already met all of those except for one, and I'm going to start on that one. And their goal line is to have it done by the end of 2015. I've already met all of those. So I've got, I think, five additional and we're actually working on all of those right now.
Good job. Just a question. On our, after I saw Sentinel, that's where the ankle monitoring?
Yes, that's the electronic monitoring.
And how much do, do they pay for that? I mean, what's the split, you know?
You mean the state?
Is, does the state pay for all of it?
No, most of that is actually paid from project income money.
Okay.
Because the persons that are on our program in the home detention are all on some type of electronic monitoring. And I'm switching it over to, we're probably at 90% on GPS monitoring. I feel that that will give the courts a better view, that we've got more control. I mean, I can pull any of those people up and tell you exactly where they're at. It's off of a satellite, Google Earth is what they use. So I mean, we can track them, we, if they're driving on the highway, we can tell you how many miles an hour they're going.
Yes, am I right?
So I'm working on switching those. Past procedure was that persons actually in the worker release center were not on electronic monitoring. I have changed that. The persons that work out of town or at different job sites are all on GPS monitoring. And we have changed it, the $15 a day for the worker release center for the participants. If they're on GPS monitoring, we, we have them pay that extra cost, which is an extra $5.35 a day.
So that they're paying, they're paying for some of their monitoring at least?
All of it.
All of it.
All of the monitoring is paid out of project income. And we just switched to Centennial. A couple months ago, we've had some problems with them, but they're working with us to get everything smoothed out. I think they're going through some equipment changes also. But we're paying considerably less than what we were with the other company. I went out and got bids from three or four different companies on monitoring costs. And I think just for the RF, previously we were paying just under $5 for the radio frequency. I've upgraded to the GPS at $5.35 a day, so there's really no cost comparison there considering when they're on RF, I've got two field officers out driving around in vehicles. We had people working in Bloomington that to pick up their signal, they would have to drive to Bloomington with the drive-by unit to get the signal. Now we've got them on, we pull it up on our phones, they're on our computers instantly. So we're saving manpower, hours and fuel costs by putting them on GPS.
And I see here if they're on home detention and there's drug screen required, they pay $25 for that, is that correct?
They pay the cost of all the drug screens on, all the programs. The only program that doesn't, that the offender doesn't pay on is the community transition, but that's being paid by the Indiana Department of Corrections through the CTP funds. And then we pay it out of project income.
Good job. Mr. President, I'd move to accept this, as presumed.
Second.
And secondly, accept the, accept the grant. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Sounds like things have been there a long over there.
And Barton, do you remember in reference to the advisory board for Community Corrections, all the non-elected positions on that board are appointed by the commissioners? Do you remember, like Alan Demkovich was on there? Was he on because he was the county attorney or?
I don't know. Do we have that down anywhere?
I, you know, it hasn't come up since I've been auditor. I guess we could look into it, but.
I can make contact with Alan and see if he remembers and if he wants to still serve on it. But those appointments need to come from the commissioners appoints all those other positions.
Was that a four-year appointment? We could go back four years and look.
I think it was.
Let me do that. Look in the minute books and see.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good job.
Ann Frost.
Good morning. I'm here on Ann Frost with Fayette County Recorder's Office. I'm here regarding a couple matters. One has nothing at all to do with the Recorder's Office and it's called the College Success Coalition here in Fayette County. It's a statewide grant program. There are 17 counties that are currently participating in it. The county would be, would be eligible for up to $6,000 in grant money to encourage people of all ages, not just college, not just high school students, but everyone to attend college or some type of higher education. On the white sheet behind it explains a little bit more about that. I volunteered to serve on the College Success Coalition as a liaison with the government portion of that coalition. It will not cost the county any money. At some point, we would be asked to participate or provide some kind of information. It could even be as simple as posting a poster on, on the bulletin board saying, "Go to college" or "Go to a technical school" or "Consider going to the military." So it's kind of a win-win situation. We really don't have to pay anything. We don't have to do anything other than provide one time during the year, something to encourage people to be aware of higher education. So I, I told the commission that I would approach our county government to see if we would like to become a member organization. That's what we would be called, a member organization. And so that would be my request. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to get the answers for you at some point.
So who, who decides, like if you, if you get the grant, who decides how you divvy that money out?
The, the coalition. And it's basically just used for publicity-type information, to get information out to the public. So the actual coalition members would do that. But the member organizations are encouraged to be a part of this and, you know, get their input into it.
Sounds like worthwhile gold to me.
Thank you, Frank.
I don't see where they could lose anything.
I would, no, I would move to become a part of this per Mrs. Frost's explanation.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Ben moved in second to approve Ann's request. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Congratulations for becoming a member, member organization. Congratulations for becoming a member, member organization of the College Success Coalition of Fayette County. I will report that back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Just thank you very much. Appreciate that. Just wanted to bring you up to date on a few goals that we have for the Recorder's Office. We have certain microfilm records that are not backed up by hard copies. There was about a 13-year period where, once microfilming started, that microphone was, an original was kept and stored off-site, and then we had the jackets for the microfilm. We really need to address this. This can all be taken care of with perpetuation. I've already received one bid from a company, and we're kind of going in a different way. So I'm still working on two more. I just wanted you to make, make you aware that we are, this is a high priority to get, because some of the microfilm is just eating away, and there are no hard copies in the counties. So that is a real high priority for us. We became aware that we really do not have any handicap-accessible workstations. And Barton, you were in the office yesterday, and when you come in to do a search, the search terminal is at chest level.
You stand up.
It's at chest level. So we, so we're in the process of getting some bids on some actual furniture instead. Right now, we're using the plat cabinet, which is about this tall, and that's where the search terminals are. So we are in the process of getting some bids for some regular workstations and moving the plat cabinet back to the large vault. So as, as those bids come in, I'll be giving those to you. And those also are recorded perpetuation funds, so we're not going to be spending any county money or taxpayer money for them. The third thing I have for a goal is we definitely need some new additional roller shelving units. I already have three, two bids ready. I have another company that's going to be presenting another bid to me. But we have got to do something about books that are just laying on, on desktops, so. So that's, those are the three goals that we have for the year, and I will be coming in to you from time to time to let you know what's happening with those.
I had, I had talked to Michelle Dudley, and I don't know if this is something you can do or not, but they went to the state. I guess the state has a, like a bargain barn where you go and get...
Used equipment.
Used equipment or shelving or so on and so forth.
Do you know how to get in touch with that group? Michelle would have a contact.
Yeah, she knows how, yeah. And she got some really good deals on some really nice furniture from the state that they...
So that could work for our workstations, too. I was thinking roller shelving, but with the workstations.
I think some of them were like a dollar.
Hello? That would be great. Lose two cabinets a mile, just for an hour each. Okay, all right. Wonderful.
And those workstations really don't have to be...
I'd rather spend a dollar than...
Those workstations really don't have to be anything fancy.
No, not at all.
Some person can sit down in a wheelchair and...
Exactly.
Look at a computer.
That may be. Just have enough room so that they can put their, their search materials down and be able to use the...
Probably not roller shelving, but for sure a workstation.
Excellent. I will get with Michelle and see what we can find out. Thank you. I always want to get that information. That's basically, I just wanted to do a meet and greet this morning, let you know what's going on. Thank you very much for supporting the College Success Coalition. And if you have anything else, I'm done.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Melinda.
These are the originals on these three contracts, and then Michael.
Melinda? Remind me to ask you a question about something related to this before we leave today, would you please?
Okay. I'm here to ask that you approve the three contracts with CSI. They are for the database, the hardware, and the software. And originally, the owner of CSI had agreed to give us a 10% discount if we signed up for three years, which they decided that was too long to obligate ourselves to CSI. So he has changed the contract to just be for one year, and then he still gives us a 10% discount on the software. So it saves us $1,390. And council has already appropriated this money. It's in my budget to pay CSI, so I just need your approval on the three contracts.
And to bring the other two up to date, the judge has been wanting to install a different, different program. We had a little difference of opinion here, I guess, so one reason we wanted to be down to one year in case that other, other program was state mandated, that we wouldn't be tied into two more years of funding or something we didn't need.
CSI has imaging, and the judicial, the JTAC system, Odyssey, does not have imaging. So we, in the clerk's office, felt it would be a step backwards to go to a company that did not do imaging. So I believe Ben's working on getting quotes on what it would cost to do imaging if we went with Odyssey. Or I think Judge, Judge Urkel's hope is that Odyssey will eventually offer imaging also.
And there is the thought that it would be state mandated that we do that, right?
That, that was part of the problem with signing the three-year contract, that it would obligate us too long.
There are three contracts here, right?
Right. Software, hardware, and the database.
Okay.
And Debbie's got the originals that I just need your signature on. The total for all three is $23,196.
It's basically what we now have, so we really don't have much choice.
Yeah. Software is $12,510. That's where the $13.90 discount comes in, because it's actually 13.9. And then the annual support and the GMA maintenance, those come to, let's see, I'll try to figure this out. I've got them all listed down, but the four J's is 1,500. The annual system support is 6,300, and then the maintenance is 28.86. So it comes to a total of 23,196. And like I said, I do have that money appropriated in the clerk's budget.
I think you actually have more than that, don't you?
I do. There'll be $13.90 left.
Yeah, like 30,600 or something.
Because of the discount. Yes, it was very gracious of him to offer the 10% discount, even though we did not sign for three years.
I'm making motions to accept.
All three contracts.
All three contracts.
Been moved secondly to accept all three contracts. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, did you have a question, Frank?
Public records. If I remember right, there's a commission that...
We meet once a year.
Meet once a year, April 1st, am I correct?
It's the first Thursday in April.
First Thursday in April.
Right.
And the court, the point is, the basement of the jail has a lot of...
Right.
Things that probably should be gotten rid of, okay? What, what's the procedure for doing that, for going through the commission?
We have a schedule, a retaining schedule that we have to follow. Some things we cannot get rid of, that they are permanent records, but most of the things, there's so many years that you have to hold on to them, and then you can get rid of them.
Okay, so you have, you have those schedules in the office?
I do, or you can get them on the Internet.
Okay.
The Public Records Commission.
Okay.
Those that we do have to maintain forever, can we microfilm those or, and then get rid of them, or as long as we have them?
No, sometimes you have to keep the original, even though you microfilm.
The reason I said, that basement of jail is...
Oh, I know, it's a mess.
It's horrendous down there.
It is.
You know, the search pipes have leaked, have leaked on, and something has to be done, or they're going to be destroyed.
Right. And that was, I'm glad you brought this up, because I've got some extra roller bar shelving now, since we've got the new units installed. And I plan to bring all those probate, civil record, and complete record books back to that room. There'll be about 60 books.
Do you have room up there to put them?
I will have room with those, with those empty roller bar shelvings that I have right now. And the reason I want them back is we have a lot of genealogy questions. People come in and want to research, and I usually end up having to go look it up over there at the jail and, you know, give them the information, because you, you don't want them over there, of course. But that would help get rid of, you know, 60 books would be, would be upstairs accessible to the public, which would be great.
We need to find a way to get rid of everything in the basement, some way or another. I mean, is this not a place, a good place to store stuff?
Oh, I know, it's, it's disgusting.
It's nasty.
It is very nasty. I agree.
Could we talk to Michelle about help, getting help moving some of the stuff?
I do plan to talk to Michelle, yes. Right now, the shelving units are still in the hall, but we've got room inside that room that we'll be able to get them back in the, in the room, and then we'll bring the books over. So they'll have to, I'll have to have help doing that.
I think there's one thing we might, we might consider. When I was sheriff, of course, I was down in the basement. I've seen some stuff down there that may have historical significance. We might want to let the Historical Commission look at some of that stuff and see if there's stuff that they want, if, if...
If it's something we can get rid of.
And actually, they did take...
If we get rid of it, and if they want it. I've seen, I've seen subpoenas for coroners, juries from back in the 1850s, et cetera, so there may be some things that they're interested in.
The Historical Society did take about, oh, I want to say about 30 of those books last year. So they have got them, I think, at the canal house now, so...
We need to make a concerted effort to clean that basement in the right way.
Right. I agree.
Well, I know, they could probably be stored in. It's my thing. Effort to do.
Okay.
And then one more thing. I need approval for the Microvote contract for the software. It's $9,500 a year. Microvote is our voting machine company, and they provide the software and they program the voting machines. They've been a very good company to work with, and we appreciate having them. So I'll ask for your approval on that contract.
Do we pay, do we pay for that? I just...
No, actually, I have that appropriated in the election budget.
Okay. And do you have, do we have the contract?
Debbie has the original. It's just a one-page.
Okay.
And, and Andrew has looked at it. I've given him a copy, but I'm sorry, I didn't get you a copy of it.
That's all right.
This passes your muster, Andrew?
Yeah, it did.
Okay. Move to accept.
Been moved secondly to approve the, approve the contract for the voting machines. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Debbie, I'll get with you later to get copies of those contracts. Thank you.
I want to do that, won't you?
Yeah, we'll, we'll sign this later. Yeah, I would like to. I had an item on the agenda is an interlocal agreement between the commissioners and the We have previously had a two-year contract with the city to pay Diane 14,000 towards Diane Wright's salary. This comes out of community development. And the reason, the reason that's done is though the, the city pays the rest of her salary plus all of her fringe benefits. It's kind of the reverse of what we did with Ben Houston, the IT person, where we pay the benefits and they pay, they pay half his salary. This, I don't think is quite half her salary, but they've agreed for us to pay 14 and then pay the rest and pay the, pay the fringe benefits. That's, and that comes directly out of the community development appropriation. There's 30,000 appropriated for that. 14,000 will go towards the city's to pay her salary. It's, it's the same, same contract that we have had. That contract was up at the end of the year, so we're, two weeks later, it's done.
Move to accept the contract as presented. I'll second.
Been moved second to accept the contract with the interlocal agreement with the city. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Patients, concerns?
Mr. President?
How about just going up, going up there so everybody can see you?
And Mr. President, Mary Ann Davenport, Orange Township trustee, a little bit of follow-up on Pioneer Cemeteries. Sometimes there's a wealth of information located in each township trustee, with the exception maybe of Connersville and Harrison, which are very large. The smaller townships, you know, the trustees are a lot more familiar with their constituents, you know, you're just pretty much neighbor, neighbor. And the, they could probably help procure permission to travel across that private land to, to get to those cemeteries. And they may even have information that has been collected years ago of cemeteries that people, we don't even know about yet.
Could be, yeah.
I know when I took over as trustee from Bob Coon, I got a big round barrel of paperwork, and it stands about this tall, and I started going through there, and it's amazing what some of the old paperwork was in there. So, but just something to help the commission with finding and procuring rights to get across.
Right. They'll be glad to hear that. Thanks. Any other patients, concerns?
No white-haired men need apply.
I'd like, what I'm here for today is just to introduce myself and my new company to the commissioners. My name is Jim Reese, most of you know me, but I recently retired from Endot and have taken a new position with Certified Engineering as construction manager for their agency, and just ask to be considered for any of your contracts with construction inspection or design in the future. I've left my card in there, and like I said, I think most of you know me, but feel free to contact me and look forward to working with any of them, for all of you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
I have one thing. The DLGF will hold a budget hearing here on, in this room on Thursday. I would love to tell you what time it is, if anybody want. Seems to me like it's 10:00 a.m., but I'll, I'll need to double-check that.
Earrings on.
Just they, that's just a part of the budget process, you know, for the, that they do a budget hearing prior to, you know, we're at the point where we will be getting our rate shortly, so...
Okay, okay. Anybody else? Need to approve the bills and the claims?
As soon as I find them.
Claims and payroll. You have, you have a whole stack?
Yeah.
Been moved second to approve the claims and the payroll. All in favor, say if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do I else have anything to come before the meeting? Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Been moved second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.